Well, it's seven o'clock P M. I'm going to call the Glendale City Council meeting to order. If you would stand for the pledge of allegiance. I can go ahead and do the roll call. It'll work. All right, then we'll move to the roll call vote.
Baker.
Here.
Coon.
Here.
Dryden.
Here.
Hedrick. Heinz.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Ambulance. Finance. Police.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
All right, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the September second twenty twenty five public hearing? Okay, Kevin and Joanne on that. All in favor of approving the minutes of the September second twenty twenty five public hearing, say aye. Next, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the September second twenty twenty five regular council meeting? Okay, Jason and Kevin. All in favor of approving the minutes of the September second twenty twenty five regular council meeting, say aye. Next, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the September second twenty twenty five closed session? Okay, Mike and Kevin. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes of the September second twenty twenty five closed session, say aye. Next, we'll move to old business. We have the street committee report first.
Okay, the street committee met on nine eleven thirty five. We opened our meeting at four p m. Um, in attendance was Rett, Kinnell, and Frightening, and Celeste, and just that committee, Dionne Bond, Senator Mary Alice York, and Jane Chrisfold in Rainford. Um, we have four items on our agenda. First was, um, approved shutting down the block of Bell Street from Kendrick to Merrill on September nineteenth with Hell Creek twenty second anniversary from ten eight and the six. We were proposing that council. Number two, approve food truck Friday at Lloyd Square Park on September twenty sixth. Um, Kendrick Avenue was recommended for the food trucks since there is not a football game linked. Third was to approve schedule change for the Culver Insurance to use our park um, and close the two hundred block of South Merrill on October eighteenth. And we just needed to confirm some times before that, um, so before the council approves that, just in the hands. And then we had an update on the Douglas and Bell Street, um, street projects. Um, so some key points from that were that the storm and summer work will begin on, in October twenty twenty five. Bids will start going out for the street work, so that's the hanging, and gutter, and sidewalks. Um, hopefully we'll have those started in June, I think, by Thanksgiving twenty five, where it started. And that the facts on moving forward from this, on this project, um, have been out of the city's people and we are moving forward. So, um, there was no public comment, and we adjourned our meeting at four nineteen P M.
Okay, thank you. Were there any questions or about that? All right, then we'll move to the Culver Committee meeting, and Mr. Dryden has that report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Quite a few FYIs here. The first item was the, um, a review of the survey of seven hundred East Little Street. Mayor Don reported that the Montana Department Corrections had the property at seven hundred East Little Street, which was formerly Watch East facility before that Eastmont, and the Boys and Girls Club was in there during the Watch East, I think. Um, now that didn't make sense. I don't, I don't understand. So they surveyed that, and they said there was no change in the previously reported property lines. Uh, the next item, uh, Public Works Director C N presented the bid package for the landfill compactor. Again, no action by the council. Uh, the next item was about the multipurpose building, and, uh, Mayor Dion engaged committee in discussion of possible city government uses for the, uh, multipurpose building. Uh, no action. The next item was, uh, a request for an additional extension, additional meaning not the first, extension of time on nuisance abatement. Mr. Gary Whitso, the owner of the property at one oh three South Ross, requested two additional weeks until October fifteenth to abate his property. This abatement would bring his property into compliance with the city's nuisance ordinance, and the committee chose not to bring the request to the council. Again, no action. Next item was the, um, idea of reorganizing city council committees' responsibilities. And Mayor Don presented for discussion the idea of balancing the workloads for the council committees. Montana Municipal Insurance Authority recommended, uh, replacing the personnel committee. So during discussion, it was mentioned creating a workplace or a public safety committee along with other suggestions. So more later, no action. Next item was the recording of council minutes. Excuse me, council meetings. Mayor Dion said that according to a twenty twenty five Montana statute, uh, the city is required to have an audio recording of city council meetings on the city's website within two weeks following the meeting. And this new state law, uh, requires implementation by October of twenty twenty five, next month. Uh, the committee recommends the council act to provide audio recordings of council meetings to the city's website within two weeks following meetings. In other words, in compliance with the, uh, statute. The next item was about Windows ten and computers upgrade. Director Center discussed continuing, continuing with Windows ten. And after the city selection of an I T service company, the city with its I T assistance will move to upgrade its computers. So we're going to continue with Windows ten to kind of fill in the gap on these, uh, timelines here. No action this time. Next, I, uh, item is a new agreement with the Dawson County Justice Peace Court. Mayor Dion brought to this committee a new agreement with Dawson County's Just Peace Court to assume responsibility for the city's police court, and the committee recommends council approve the agreement. There was no public comment. We adjourned at five fourteen, and, uh, that completes my report, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Are there any questions or discussion about that? Okay, then we'll move on to public comment. Do we have anybody who wishes to give public comment? All right, Mr. Whitso. You're up.
Um, I'm Gary Haco, uh, one oh three South Ross Avenue. Clean up going on and. Suffered an injury to my big toe and had surgery on, uh, Monday to remove, uh, the growth of the head. And I'm not supposed to be moving around on it much, but I'm doing it anyway because I'm trying to, uh, get all this taken care of. Um, but again, I'm slowed down by a personal injury, so I'm here today to respectfully ask for a two-week extension on the deadline, uh, which was, which is right now is October first, and I was hoping to get an extension to October fifteenth. Then everything will be wrapped up by that time. I have three minutes, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, um.
Yeah, well, you have two minutes seventeen now.
All right, um, I've made a lot of progress. Uh, 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 sold one vehicle, uh, uh, gave another one away and, uh, uh, moved another one to a different location, to a different story here. So, um, multiple loads to border steel and to the landfill, uh, which has cleared up a lot on my property. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, got a friend of mine who's been helping me almost to date, uh, in the cleanup, and so it's, uh, it's really moving along now, but, um, uh, I had a, had this problem with my toe, which, uh, I had to take care of, and, uh, I, I guess that's, that's it. I'm asking for an extension, another two weeks, please.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, and you can go ahead and sit down, Gary, if you're done speaking. Um, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comment? All right, then we will move to new business. The first item of new business is to approve closing half the block of Bell Street toward Kendrick to Merrill on September nineteenth for the Hell Creek Music twenty-second anniversary with a food truck on Bell Street. So could I get a motion for that? Okay, Kevin, in a second, basic. All right. Any discussion about this? And all in favor of approving closing half of the block of Bell Street toward Kendrick to Merrill on September fifteenth for Hell Creek Music twenty-second anniversary with a food truck on Bell Street, say aye.
Aye.
The next item is to approve food truck Friday at Lloyd Square Park on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the trucks could be on Gresham or Kendrick if needed. They will have music and activities, and they have event insurance, excuse me. So could I get a motion for that? Okay, Clyde, in a second. Kevin. All right, so. Any discussion about this one? I think we had said that maybe it would be best if they were on Kendrick because we think there's not a football game tonight, so I did speak with Nick Smelter. Um, she said she would prefer to have it on Gresham because that's closer to the, um, covered picnic area, which is where it's going to be. Um, and I told her that that street there has a lot of, um, trailers and cars and campers parked along that side because everybody that lives on that side parks their stuff over there. So she said she's going to make some posters and she would go around to all the houses there and ask them if they would consider moving their vehicle, so. Um, I don't object to that if, and I, I just wanted to bring that back forward in case any of you had an objection.
Mayor, um, how long, this is at night, then?
Yeah.
So how long is the music going to be going on? Because actually, they have to get a waiver for a noise ordinance after a certain kind of cough or something.
Yeah, but for some reason, I think it's five to nine or something. It, I, I'm not positive, but it, um, it's not too late.
No A C D C after nine.
Any other discussion about the food truck Friday? All right. All in favor of approving food truck Friday at Lloyd Square Park on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-five with the trucks on Gresham or Kendrick? Um, say aye. Okay. All right, the next thing is to approve the schedule change for Culver Insurance to close the two hundred block of South Merrill on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and to use our park as part of the celebration, and it is from ten to six. So could I get a motion for that? Okay, Kevin, in a second, Rett. Okay, yes, Mike.
Uh, Mayor, do we need permission from the state to?
Um, yeah, we do, but Ryan takes care of that.
Okay.
When they ask for it, then we do get that, um, permit.
So if we, we, uh, approve it, then the state has the wherewithal to approve it or not beyond whatever we say.
Right. I think they have always approved it, at least since I've been in. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the schedule change for Culver Insurance to close the two hundred block of North Merrill on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five and use our park as part of a celebration from ten to six, say aye. Okay, the next item is, uh, number four. That is to approve the new agreement with Dawson Justice Court. Um, because this is an agreement also known as a contract, we'll have to have a roll call vote on this. So it is in your packet, the, we did need to change the date because, um, the court closed basically at the end of the day on September second, so we needed to, um, enact this so that the justice court could immediately begin hearing the cases. Yes, Mr. Dryden?
I just want to ask one question on this, Mayor. So, um, the timeframe for our agreement has changed from, I think what we agreed to earlier, so, uh, otherwise, the financial details of the agreement are essentially the same, given the difference in the timeframe. So, in other words, it's, besides the change in the dates, the financial details, it's essentially the same.
Right, but we, um, are prorating it from September to December because the new, the other contract was supposed to start in January, so it's for two point three years. And at the end of two years, uh, we can either continue the contract or renegotiate it. Um, we, since it was new, we just put it for a two-year, but. Any other questions about it or concerns? Yes, Mr. Coon?
Did we make a motion?
I thought we did.
Oh, no.
No, I don't have it written down. No, we don't.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you'll make a motion, all right, right, and a second, my dog. Okay. All right, who, now I got a motion, so now, uh, we can talk about it, sorry. All right, any other questions about it? All right, then let's do the roll call vote on approving the new agreement with the Dawson Justice Court.
Baker?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Dryden?
Aye.
Heinz? Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, next I need a motion to approve resolution number three one nine three, which is a resolution to cancel the municipal election as there are no contested seats. So could I get a motion for that? Okay, we got, um, Mike and Doug. Any discussion about the resolution? Nope. All right. Uh, all in favor of approving resolution three one nine three to cancel the, the municipal election as there are no contested seats? Oh, Rett, I'm sorry, it's a resolution. We have to do a roll call. I don't think I'm catching on very fast.
Thompson? Sassy?
Aye.
Mitchell? Heinz? Dryden?
Aye.
Coon? Baker?
The next item, I put it as an F Y I, but, um, I believe that in Mr. Dryden's report, um, he brought it forward for us to consider, so if you'll just cross out the F Y I, we will ask for a motion for that city to post an audio recording of city council meetings on the city website within fourteen days of the meeting. And I'm going to say beginning on the set date in October. So could I get a motion for that? Okay, Mike and Joanne. Okay. Uh, is there any discussion about it? Yes, Rett.
Uh, so are we going to choose to?
Well, I kind of, I, I think that's up to, to us. We do, we're only required to do the audio recording. You know, personally, I hate being on video, but I don't really care for the sound of my voice either, so either way, I don't like it. But, uh, I guess, um, how, whatever you guys decide, we don't have to decide it today. But, um, for now, I mean, we'll try to record it when it works, but we're only required to do the audio. Yes, Mr. Dryden?
Oh, yeah, just a question. So if we have the, uh, if we attempt to do video and we don't get the machine to work, so to speak,
Mm-hmm.
layman's terms, then do we, does the audio pick up? Because the one time, a few weeks ago, I thought there was no recording of the meeting because we tried to get video, and so
Mm-hmm.
we didn't get anything, and that's, that's my concern, and that's why when we wrote this up in committee, that it did not include video, it was just audio, because that is what we're required by law. And the other part of that, I guess, um, the, the question comes back, it's, you go for the video, do you lose both if it doesn't work?
You know, the, uh, we're, we record on the audio in two different ways, with the little recorder, and we're recording it on here, on the computer. Uh, I also found, uh, a microphone over at the court, a meeting microphone. So maybe we can also enhance the recording, but, um, we had to contact our website manager, whatever, so they'll be able to, uh, start posting that probably this week. We'll be able to have it up. But we do have a video recording when the audio, I mean, we have an audio recording when the video failed at our last council meeting. We recorded it, and the sound is very good, so I don't know if we really need the microphone because, uh, the sound is much better than when it's just through the owl. Um, the owl takes a few seconds to know who's talking, and so, I mean, like you made a great wisecrack about the Hooper Committee, and dang it, it didn't pick that up on the recording. Yeah, and it, I, it was a good one, and so anyways, they, they missed that on the show, but. Well, he, we were, I'm not going to tell you now what the fun of joke was, but anyway. All right, so any other, uh, discussion about the recording? All right, then, all in favor of the city posting an audio recording of city council meetings on the city website within fourteen days of the meeting beginning, beginning on the set date in October, say aye. The next item is accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty-six of a hundred eighty-six thousand forty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Rett, in a second. Okay, Kevin. All in favor of paying the accounts payable claims of a hundred eighty-six thousand forty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, say aye. Next, we have department head comments. Um, Mr. C N has a report in your packet, but, uh, does anybody have any questions for Mr. C N? Yes, Mr. Dryden?
Um, yeah, Frank, just the, um, the last item in the report, uh, before we're looking ahead, the, um, change order six, is that to be, uh, the outfit from Diggson, I believe, is it B E K, right? Yeah, they were going to work on that in October. Is that what we're doing? Okay, okay, that's all we're doing. So that'll be done this fall, then. Okay, great. Oh, I was so nervous about mine, I was kind of missing.
Any other questions for Mr. C N? All right, then, Mr. Jonas, did you have anything?
Yeah. We should have another one hopefully by the next week. This not respond to that.
Okay, well, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Jonas?
Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones? Um, so how is the, um, you may not be familiar with this, even though you work at the police department, but how's the cleaning up the absolute documents and stuff, how's that going with, uh, the company as multi-code, right?
So, sign up a little bit more about.
Red?
Yeah.
Yes, red. That's right.
The thing that you, from what I've seen, it's a lot.
Do you guys have a specific date each month you do, or just kind of, how do you get a hold of them?
We have time limit.
Yeah. Yeah, then, I don't know, it's my big question for the council mayor on that last, but, um, do we have a, a year contract? Is that how that works?
No, we just have a month-to-month contract.
Okay.
So once they're done, they're done.
Thanks, Austin.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, and Mayor Joe, did you have anything?
Yes, Gary, thank you. We started our E N T class tonight. As you can see, there's cars in the parking lot. Uh, sixty people in attendance right now over there. Night gave, body of scenes being in instruction, right? So that's a very exciting thing to have that.
Yeah.
So I'd really like to have that. Last week, I spent, um, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday in Fairmont at EMS manning day workshop in the Rocky Mountain Thomas Emporium, which was pretty good, pretty well received. The workshop is always very good to a term. The Thomas Emporium was okay, very few things. And I think we have to.
All right, well, thank you. All right, next we have committee meetings. The Personnel Committee will meet on September twenty-second at four P M. The Ordnance Committee will meet on September twenty-second at four fifteen P M. And then I just have, uh, basically one mayor comment. I just want to remind everyone, including all of you sitting here, that the city government study committee is seeking input regarding city services and city government. I've heard from several people that did not vote for this study and feel it's a waste of time and taxpayer funds, saying the questions do not produce measurable data, are subjective, and many people say they have no intention of completing the survey. So regardless of how you feel, as taxpayers, you are already paying for this survey, and the committee needs to hear the opinions of everyone. This includes people who are unhappy with city government and those who are satisfied with city government. Other people told me they will not give their email, and they don't want emails coming to them from the study committee. The committee is not going to email you. They are asking for the email information to try to reduce the amount of duplicate survey responses. To get results from actual city residents, it's important that all city residents complete the survey and be honest when doing so. Historical data shows that often people who are very dissatisfied or dissatisfied will complete a survey. You do not have to use the Q R code. There are paper surveys available here at City Hall. So it's important to complete the survey, even if you do not wish to change the form of government. You will not have this opportunity again until ten years from now, when the government study committee will again be on the ballot, and voters will decide if the form of government will be studied. So I'm just urging everyone to complete the survey if you live in the city. Please only complete one survey and be honest um, in your opinions. Otherwise, it's just not, um, going to have any validity if only a few people respond. And I think, um, anybody can Google survey results, and they will tell you that if you're mad or unhappy, you're more likely to fill it out than if you're fine with it. So I think it's important that we. or unhappy, you're more likely to fill it out than if you're fine with it. So I think it's important that we all fill it out, so.
Yes, uh, just on that point, did they have a suggested deadline? I don't know this one.
I didn't know this one either, but I thought it was only due this month.
Okay.
Um. That was my understanding, I mean. All right. And with that, we could move for adjournment. All right, Joanne, in seconded by Jason, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, meeting is adjourned at seven thirty.